Well, hello. Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, another Monday here for Talawa Cyber, the command line, the command lines, CISP study session. Again, we do this every Monday, every Monday night, seven PM Eastern, at least we try to. But we're here so far, still been manager. We've been doing pretty well. Can't can't get the words out of my mouth. I hope everyone has been doing, doing great. One of the things I wanna share with you all before, before we get started. Well, if you're watching us on YouTube, or if you subscribe to the channel, please, we'll for one more, thank you for those on, on the replay team, the replay gangs, you know, appreciate you watching and checking out the stream. But yeah, for those on checking us out on YouTube, please like, share, subscribe, you know, tell your friends, tell, tell those who you know that are preparing for certification to come through and be part of the community. All right, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
All right. So let's go here. Let me just get this set up. Do thirty questions. How you been doing, man?
Oh.
Oh.
Better, better day than you thought.
You know, you, you're like, it sounded like you had to take a breath before you,
Yeah.
Before you answer that.
Yeah, better days, so I always, I slipped late last night.
Oh, man. Oh, man. Alright, so before we get started, I'm just gonna share this, I'm gonna do this one read from my part, from my partners over at Pocket Prep. So they have a, so Pocket Prep, they, they got a Black Friday and Cyber Monday deal that's starting up on the twenty first, November twenty first. So it's gonna be the biggest sale of the year. So it's gonna be Pocket Prep's largest discount event yet. So you could say twenty five percent on your first subscription, whether you choose monthly, quarterly, or yearly. The Black Friday and Cyber Monday sale runs from November twenty first to five December, or December fifth, giving, giving everyone a full two weeks to take advantage of the deal. So this is something you don't want to miss. It's a limited time offer, so once it's gone, it's, it's, it's a wrap. It's done. It's not coming back, at least not for a while. But so you, you don't want to mess around, you want to take advantage of this great deal, because it's not gonna happen again anytime soon. So it's a perfect time to invest in your future, you know, instead of spending, spending money on things that, that fade. You know, you want to invest in something that lasts, and that's your dream. That's something you want to, we talk about building your legacy. This is how you do it. You do that with Pocket Prep, you do that with Talawa Cyber. So again, just wanna put it out there. Again, if you want to take advantage of those deals, join the Discord community, follow Talawa Cyber on all our socials, and I'll get you hooked up. All right. Now, now is the time. We'll get going, do thirty questions tonight. Let's go. Let's go for that ninety. All right. All right, question one. Alright, so an organization has been using state-of-the-art software for automation in its warehouses designed in nineteen ninety-two by Maple Leaf Industries. The state-of-the-art software has guided the organization through a major portion of its history. In fact, the software is the backbone of their infrastructure. It would seriously damage the organization if it were no longer available or able to be processed and reformed for updates. Maple Leaf Industries has recently experienced serious financial issues and has decided to make its proprietary software available to customers if it financially collapses, that can no longer operate. What can Maple Leaf Industries put in place to protect the source code until these requirements and conditions are met? That's a full essay.
Could there be software escrow?
That, that's, that's what I'm looking at. So I wanna, I wanna eliminate Bravo. I'm keeping software escrow in my back pocket for right now. I'm just looking at these other ones. Definitely, you can eliminate Charlie, a company will know. Now, code repository.
It's between code repository and software escrow.
Yeah.
But I'm really thinking that what they were saying was, they weren't available to customers if it's financially collapsed, it can no longer operate. So I'm thinking about how we do with key escrow, also the same.
Yeah. I, yeah, and that's where I'm leaning towards as well. I believe this is gonna be software escrow. Let's see if we're right. Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, so software or code escrow process is when the third party maintains the source code in an event that a customer needs it, when a vendor or company that initially developed the code no longer exists. This ensures the security of the source code being released, from being released to the public, while allowing a way for software to be relied upon or passed on to someone else when the creator is no longer available. All right, which of the following is a US government agency that develops and maintains information, security standards, and guidelines? That's, that's gonna be NIST.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the National Institute of Standards and Technology is part of the US Department of Commerce, is responsible for developing information, security standards, and guidelines. All right, of the following, what best describes the purpose of the initialization Vector IV?
Authorization Vector.
I think you want to eliminate Bravo.
Yeah, increase the hash and speed during wireless communications. No. Oh.
Oh, man.
Yep. Could we eliminate A, too?
Yeah, this one, I'm trying to I think we can, because I thi- I think, I think it's gonna be between Charlie and Delta.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Let's see.
I want, I want to, man.
Let's see.
I'm thinking it's Delta, but I'm I, I don't feel a hundred percent confident. I'm not completely eliminated.
Hold on, let's see. Let's see. Now, we're gonna take away, oh. Um, I wanna say, okay. Deals with sessions. I'm looking at Charlie. I'm, I'm telling you, I know I took out Bravo and Alpha. It was down to Charlie and Delta, but increasing the key link. Uh. I don't think it's increasing key. I'm trying to think of what something that increases the key lead when it comes to our hash.
Increase, increase hash and speed during wireless communication.
Yeah.
It might be Bravo.
I think it's, I, I really, I'm leaning toward Charlie. Because see, you could, you could be already, because it's talking about wireless communication.
Oh, yeah, it, yeah.
And from that point, I'm looking at all right, provide diffusion. You, you don't want to provide diffusion. That's what you want to prevent. You never want to provide any diffusion. You want to not provide collusion or diffusion. So we can eliminate A and B off the top. So now it's down to C and D. So.
Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's kind of pick this up.
I'm, I'm gonna see.
Alright, let's see.
Because it's something, it's something, it was something that, oh.
Yep. Yeah, so the IV is a random value used with a key to encrypt or decrypt data. So it's used to reduce the likelihood that the same plaintext patterns will be found in the ciphertext. So that's why WP, Wired Equivalent Privacy was weak because they use a short twenty-four bit and predictable IV. This caused the same IV to be used multiple times throughout the stream, allowing attacks to find patterns between messages using the same IV.
Let's scroll down, see why it was it.
Yeah, IV doesn't directly affect hash and speed. Diffusion occurs when there's a sufficient changes from plaintext to ciphertext. So if one bit of the plaintext is changed, there needs to be a significant change to the ciphertext. If not, there's too much, there's too much predictability in the algorithm.
And IV does not change the key lead in any way. That's what I was thinking about. I was like, I ain't see a change in key lead.
Yep. All right, which network type best connects servers to network attached devices that are designed to hold bulk data over time?
Could that be storage?
Yeah, this is gonna be.
I'm thinking of storage.
Yeah, I think it's Alpha.
Yeah.
Wish connect service and network attached devices.
Yeah, hold but data over time.
Oh, excuse me.
Is that a storage? Yeah. I'm like, is that a storage?
Because NAS is, um, yeah, it's a, it's a device. I'm trying to think of an example, because I've it, it's, it's almost like having like a, I guess, like a mini raid.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that'd be a NAS, example of a network attached storage. So the storage area network connects servers to a network attached storage device. Storage can be attached using Internet Small Computer Systems Interface, iSCSI, Fiber Channel, RSC, or Network File System, or NFS. Alright, Riley needs to send a file to a colleague, but he will need to sign the document so that his colleague will know that he sent it. Which of the following keys would he use to create a digital signature on the file?
Okay, verify on this private, so I know it's public, but when you deal with digital signature, what is, what is to create those to verify?
So you, you're gonna create, if he's creating a signature, it's gonna be, it's gonna be private.
Private. Is it the receiver or the sender?
Which of the following keys would he use to create a digital signature on the, on the file? Uh, that'd be private key of the sender.
And then public key of the receiver is to verify.
Yeah, the public key is so the, the receiver can open it.
Yeah, so yeah, let's go with that.
You need to sign the document so carbon note that he sent it. So that's gonna be his private key. Which bucket would he use to create this essential file? I wish they put like the names.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, this should be private key of the sender. So Riley's the sender. Yeah.
Yeah.
I always get a little weird. You always have to kind of like double, triple check when it comes with these type of questions. We talk about the public and private keys.
Oh, I just thought about it. When you're doing encryption, public, private key, when you do asymmetric encryption, the private key is to the receiver. I think it's vice versa, when you do asymmetric encryption, when you're sending it, so it's like the flip. It's more like a flip. One is to send, and others to verify with digital signatures.
Well, remember, you, you're never, you're never gonna share your private key.
Yeah.
So in, in order to, if you send to, you know, to the recipient, it has to be a public key. But then, the, once, once the person receives, once the person receives it, then they use their private key to decrypt it.
Okay.
But you never share your private key. Alright, a string of five hundred twelve alphanumeric characters is entered as input in an application field that does not perform input validation. The variable associated with that field has the capacity for only eight alphanumeric characters. What attack type is most commonly applied to exploit this weakness?
Hmm, that, that I don't know.
Oh, I, I think, I think it's might be Alpha.
Overflow.
Yeah, let me look at it again. It's an input in an application field that does not perform input validation. The variable associated with that field.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it only, a whole of eight.
Right.
Or more.
Yeah. Yes, a buffer overflow attack is commonly applied to exploit this weakness. Buffer overflow occurs when an application buffer is populated with data that exceeds the capacity allocated to it, causing the excess data to overflow into adjacent memory, thereby overriding it with the excess data. Buffer overflow attacks exploit this to override memory locations that contain application code with malicious code that is incorporated into the excess data. Alright, which law of privacy protects US citizens by setting limits on the federal government's use of their personal information?
Should be the Privacy Act. Privacy Act is nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah. I would agree with that. Yeah, Privacy Act of nineteen seventy-four restricts the way government can use private information, and also defines exceptions such as a census, law enforcement, and health, and safety. Alright, which of the following is not a function of the software assurance maturity model?
Let's see. Governors, design, adaptation, verification. I know design and a verification is one and two. So now down to adaptation of governance.
Wait, say that again?
I know design and verification is one, is, is in there, is in the SAAM. So it's now, it's now designed with governance or adaptation. I wanna say A.
It's not a function of software. Software sure. And you, and you said, you said verification was, was part of it?
Yeah, verification and design is part. Software assurance.
Alright, I was scared to shot here. Let's see.
Oh, yeah, I'll tell you, at least I, I was fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
I was fifty-fifty. I, I knew like verification and, oh. Oh, okay, so governors ensures the policies come into play. I knew design and verification were two of them that was on there.
Yeah, so adaptation is not a function of the software assurance maturity model, or SAM. SAM is a regimented and well-structured approach to ensure proper software development with security in mind, does not offer the flexibility of adapting to the needs of software. Instead, software should follow suit with SAM. Alright, which of the following terms best describes the act of bypassing the native security restrictions of a mobile device to grant its user full device privileges? I want to, I want to say routing.
I want to say that, too.
Yeah, which font describes, alright, so, so geofencing, you could eliminate that. Geotagging, that's for like your, your tagging like pictures, like you see the location where you took a picture. So you could eliminate Charlie and Delta. Side, side loading is close. But I said, yeah, native restriction, that, that's, yeah, that's rooting. Yeah, mobile device.
Yeah.
I always think of like when someone like roots a Android device.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, Geo, yeah, geofencing security is a security feature common if utilized in conjunction with mobile devices, restrict access based on location. Routing, and that's the act of bypassing the native security restrictions of a mobile device to grant its user full device privileges, is referred to as rooting. Rooted devices could typically be customized in ways that unrouted devices cannot, or frequently have greater exposure to security risks. Alright, stealthy security suites and beats is looking to find software as a service to use for cloud storage. Which of the following would be least likely to provide this service?
Hmm. Software as a service, okay. So let's put these two together. Google Cloud and Microsoft Azure is pretty much the same. What is AWS Lambda?
Lambda, um. I think that has to, I think them.
Because I'm really leaning toward Dropbox. But then again, hold on.
No, Dropbox is.
Dropbox is software as a service, so is Google Cloud.
Yeah.
If AWS Lambda is what it is, I think Azure.
Geez, I, I forget. I believe this is Lambda. Yeah, I mean, so for cloud storage, definitely Dropbox, Google Cloud for sure, and Microsoft Azure.
Azure is.
But.
So we can eliminate B and C, because they're both almost the same, Google Cloud, Dropbox, because both of them are clouds.
Yeah. Azure, Azure is as well. Huh?
Well, Azure be more platform as a service?
It could, it could be, because, you know, because I was thinking if, if it's said Microsoft OneDrive, I'll feel more confident as that as a, as a SaaS.
Yeah.
You could be right. I think Azure may be more of a.
Because what's AWS, oh.
I, I, I can't, I think it's close. I, I, I think it might be a SaaS, too. So I think Azure might be pass or platform as a service.
Yeah, I think it might be platform as a service, too, because I think the software as a service would probably be OneDrive.
Alright, so, so we're going with Delta?
Yeah. I was, it was Lambda.
Yeah, alright, what is? So Lambda is a, yeah, AWS cloud service defined as a function as a service. It's, is a fast, or it's a function as a service. Functions with many other services on AWS cloud service. While it's not necessary to know the service is provided by, provided by providers such as AWS or Azure, it's helpful way to understand these concepts. So yeah, Azure, Google Cloud, and Dropbox are all cloud services.
We had that fifty-fifty again.
Yeah. And we were, we were there, I, 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 I think, you know, because just knowing seventy-five percent of that, because even not fully know what Lambda was, I think knowing what the others were helped in. I think, for example, to not, just try not to, you don't want to talk yourself out of the right answer.
Yeah.
Alright, other following, which would be an example of a type-two error for a biometric system?
That's something you have. So, wait, for a type-two error? Okay, hold on, I don't know. Valid subject is for type-two. Type-two would be.
So type-two is, yeah, a subject would be I think it's gonna be Alpha.
Yeah, I think it's a valid subject is not authenticated. I don't think is, I really don't think D, and a valid subject authenticated, meaning pass, it's not an error in that. So we can eliminate B, because a valid subject authenticated, that means that it is not an error, is is done, so. And a valid subject is rejected. I don't see that. So now I'm down to A and C, which is a valid subject is not authenticated, or invalid subject is authenticated, which I'll look at that Alpha.
Yeah. Let's see.
I'll see. So back at fifty-fifty again.
So type-two, so type-two errors when invalid subject is authenticated. The rate at which this occurs is known as the false acceptance rate of FAR. So for example, Josephine, who is not authorized, uses her fingerprint to log in, and the system accepts it, this would be considered a type-two. Type-one is a false reject. So this occurs when a valid subject is not authenticated. If a valid subject is authenticated, is not an error. This is, this is what is wanted. If an invalid subject is rejected, this is also good condition and not an error. This, too, is a wanted condition. So again, type-two, an invalid subject is authenticated. Type-one is a false reject, occurs when a valid subject is not authenticated.
I forgot about that. And that's identity asset management, because in the middle is a crossover error way, which is, um, you can tune that to make sure one or the other goes up or down.
Alright, a PIP, a PIPA, Pi Incorporated is excited to begin migrating many of its systems from its physical servers to cloud servers. The Chief Information Security Officer is especially excited as this will reduce the need to resolve problems in person and allow for focus on larger products within the business. However, the CISO also knows the company still holds responsibilities for many things and must maintain high standards. Of the following, what is one major component of the business is, what is one major component of the business is no longer necessarily responsible for after the transition to cloud service and to a software as a service or SaaS company?
Hmm, oh, wait. That one.
Alright. Fine, what is the one?
Let's see this again. I have to really look at this.
It could be application.
Yeah.
If they, it, transition into a cloud service and to a software as a service company, the application is, is being maintained by the provider.
That could be, alright, so which one we gonna eliminate? I think identity asset access is necessary. The data itself is necessary.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna keep that on the client side.
In the client, oh, yeah, we might as well say C, because I was like, between, yeah.
Yeah, software as a service, cloud provider will be responsible for everything up to the application. Um, so a PIPA is, a PIPA Pi Incorporated is, is likely partially responsible for the application. But for the other elements and the other answers, they're absolutely responsible. This would be determined by the cloud provider and their shared responsibility, sha- shared responsibility model.
Yeah.
Alright, in Kerberos, the tickets are encrypted. Where does the crypto variable that is essential for the encryption come from?
Oh goodness. Where does the crypto variable that is essential for the encryption come from? It's not A.
No. First color mine is Bravo.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, key KDC.
And, and Kerberos tickets are encrypted, where does a character variable that's essential?
I wanna say KDC.
Yeah, I, I think this is Bravo. I'm taking my chances with that.
Yeah, KDC, I was like, it had to be K.
So Kerberos has three core servers, the KDC, the key distribution center, the authentication server. And the ticket granting server. So the KDC is a server that creates and distributes the symmetric keys that are used to encrypt. And decrypt the tickets by the user's machine and the destination server. Alright, what type of activity is best for finding active hosts and open ports?
Oh, network discovery scan.
Network discovery scan?
I think, I don't wanna be too cocky or too covered in all it.
Alright, so we got network vulnerability scan, network discovery scan, but you, you're holding Bravo in your back pocket. Alright, so we're looking at. Also got log reviews and penetration test.
Well, we know it's not penetration test.
No, you could, you could eliminate that.
Yeah, law reviews.
No, you can eliminate that.
Vulnerability scans deal with, yeah, I'm gonna go with B, you know, cause I, I was like, vulnerability scan, you're dealing with.
Correct, the correct answer is network discovery scan. Yeah, so network discovery scans check, uh, ranges of IP addresses and attempts to find open ports. This provides security assessors with a list of host target for further analysis. I'll, I don't think it, I don't think it's really, the other options aren't, we're really seriously considering them. Yeah. Alright, which of the following best describes why password reuse should be prevented?
God, this is hard one. As much as it look easy, it's not easy. Rainbow table attack. This is birthday attack. I don't think it's D, so I can cut that short. D reuse passwords do not confirm the current requirements. It doesn't, but still, if you reuse it, there's, there's something that's gonna happen, so, alright. We know it's bad, but we don't know, I'm looking at, why is it bad?
Right.
Reuse passwords are more likely to have previous.
I think this is gonna be Alpha.
I, I wanna say, yeah, I do believe it should be Alpha on that. But what does it get me is. And sometimes I had to look, like, what is a birthday attack? Out of all, out of all stuff, I'd be like, well, birthday attacks.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I think.
Geez, it's escaping me right now. But I, I think this is gonna be Alpha.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be Rainbow too.
What was, what was Rainbow?
I, I had it in my pocket, but I was like, alright, that, it makes sense, but you know, you like, it makes sense to the fact that. Why would it be that easy to be to check off?
But yeah, no, it is. I, I, I looked, I looked at that too. That, that, that I'd say that's, uh, we gave that one away. Yeah, reuse passwords are more likely to have been previously exposed. Yeah, traditional reason passwords are changed is to reduce the likelihood that an exposed password is still in use. So, so what, what did I pick? I chose Rainbow Table. So Rainbow Table is a table of pre-computed hashes for possible passwords. So the password that a user is using has been pre-com- pre-computed. It would take seconds to find the value if a bad actor has computed the hash of a user's password. Again, pressured, uh, Rainbow Table has to do with password, uh, pre-computed hashes for possible passwords. Uh, birthday attacks are used to find two passwords that hash to the same value. See, I, I, I don't know, I think the. I knew birthday had something to do like, like there's two elements had to match. I, I just couldn't.
Yeah.
You know, articulate it best that, that would make sense, but. That's why I kinda, uh, I didn't, to me, I didn't think that birthday attack was right. But yeah.
It's one of them, like, it's too good to be true, but you don't wanna trip up.
Alright, the idea, the idea that the know-how of a privileged ta- of a privileged task is divided among multiple users is known as what principle? This should be Bravo.
Just split knowledge. The idea that, that the know-how of a privilege tag is divided among multiple users.
Yeah, so like, you, you have a process i- in place, um, in order to complete it. Not one person knows the full process. It's, it's, it's segmented among maybe, or divided among maybe three or four different people. In order that process to be complete, or for a particular action to be done.
Yeah, yep, split knowledge.
Yeah, so subset of, it's a subset of the separation of duties. Split knowledge is a principle where the knowledge or know-how required before a privileged task is divided among multiple users. Hence, no single person has sufficient knowledge to compromise system security. Alright, Jim is concerned about the physical security of the heat and ventilation and air conditioning HVAC system. All the following, what best reduces the likelihood of someone entering the building through the ducts?
What reduces, I wanna say, hey, what? His concern about the physical security of he.
What control best reduces like of someone entering the building through, oh, uh. No, you can eliminate Bravo.
Yeah. You ain't, you ain't decreasing the temperature today, they'll still can figure it out. Protect HVAC ducts with barriers and decre- well. That's. C is kinda interesting.
I don't, uh, the only problem I have with that, cause. You could affect the efficiency for the, the air for the building. So that, that's only my issue with that.
But I'm down to A and C, which is add motion detectors in the ducts. But reduces the likelihood of someone entering a building through the ducts. If you add motion detectors, you know who's in the ducts.
Well, you, you, you wanna know who is in it, but you know someone's in it, because it's not cameras. Um, but like a alarm will go off if someone is, uh, in the duck.
Yeah.
I, I, I just can't recall. Any building that I've seen barriers in front of a duck though.
But I'm also looking at human safety too, so this might be, this might be one that, yeah, it's easy, but then again, is. Is how you, is, if you're, are you overthinking it? So.
What, for Charlie?
He, I'm looking at Charlie and Alpha, but I was like, this is the one that, if I.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just thinking of real life. I mean, have you ever seen like?
No, I haven't seen.
I never seen like no barriers in front of a duck before.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
So that, that's why I'm kinda leery about that, um, then even in. Facilities I've been in, I've never seen that before. Alright, I'm gonna go with Alpha, and it was.
It was that, and the reason why I was thinking that, I was like, I'm gonna put that in my pocket because, um. It's two ways, but I'm also thinking human safety, like.
I, I, I have to see what that looks like, cause I, I, I can't recall. Unless, unless it's inside the duct. I, I, I have not seen a barrier before.
Yeah, well, I'm glad, look, it's another fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one of those ones that you be like, hey, am I really? The same way I thought about another one, one of the other ones that we had that was easy, like. Are we really saying this out loud, or we, this could be, it's too good to be true.
Right.
I just looked at it like that.
Alright, Kaya is a penetration tester who has been hired as, uh, assess an organization's security awareness. She decides to spend, excuse me, send a specifically, especially crafted email to a specific employee, asking her to click a link. Verified employee benefits. She chooses the word, this wording, because she knows the company recently finished enrolling all its employees into the benefit plans. Which of the following best describes the type of, the type of attack Kaya used?
It sounds like whaling. I think it's whaling.
Why you say whaling?
Um, it's targeting specific, uh, employees. Notably, uh, big time, uh. It's finishing roll all employees into their benefits plans, so.
Especially crafted emails to a certain class. Cause I guess I was looking at Bravo.
For social engineering. Nah, that's a wrong.
Cause, cause, cause whaling, I thought whaling had to do like, if you're targeting like the CEO or something.
Isaiah sent especially crafted email to a specific employee. That's why I looked at, but it could be social engineer, but I, I looked at that part right there.
Especially created email, tha- but then, alright, so what, but what about spear phishing?
Hmm, I don't think.
Because it, it doesn't, but the thing, wh- whaling, it, it doesn't, yeah, I, I hear you saying where it says a specific employee. But it doesn't say that that specific employee is, is anyone of note. It doesn't say that that employee is, uh. An executive or anything. It could be just a regular employee as well.
Oh. Now I'm looking at, yeah, I'm gonna stick with Whalen, cause she said she chooses this wording. Because she knows the company recently finished enrolling all these employees into their benefits plan.
And so you, so with that, you, you gonna stick with Whalen?
The top, she going for the top. To verify their employees' be- and she's clicking the link to verify their employee benefits. So all person that will have everybody's employee benefits would be. Up top to HR or CEO. I know, it's, it's.
I'm so nervous. Alright, I'll, I'll go Whalen, uh, but I think, I think this could be spear phishing.
Oh, a little spear phishing. Let's see.
Yeah, so, yeah, spear phishing, targeted cyber attack method which malicious actors impersonate trusted entities via deceptive emails or messages. They aim to attack, excuse me, trick recipients into revealing sensitive info and credentials into downloading malware. So whaling is type of phishing that targets high-profile individuals, executives, so, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, like, that scenario didn't just. I know they said a target employee, but they never said anything that. There's no evidence that, that, that target employee was a CEO or, or anything like that. They never said that, so that, that's why I, I wasn't really on board with whaling. But, um, yeah, attackers crack convincing messages to, messages to deceive these targets into revealing sensitive info. Or authorize the financial transactions.
We knew clone phishing wasn't it.
Yeah.
And so, social engineering can't close, but it's just, uh.
Yeah, the, the, the specifics of it took it away from social engineering.
Yeah.
Or it graduated from that. Alright, uh, Kerberos is an authentication protocol that employs the use of which of the following?
There'd be tickets.
Tickets.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kerberos uses a series of tickets to authenticate users' clients and provide access to network resources. Using Kerberos, clients obtain tickets from the key distribution center and present these tickets. To network resources when access requests are made. Kerberos uses symmetric encryption like the advanced encryption standard, AES, to secure and verify the ticket's authenticity. Alright, within the process of gaining access to systems at the office, what must users, um. At the office, users must take several actions. What is the step of, of proving a claim identity called?
Proving the claim identity. Authentication?
Authentication, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be ident- identity and access manager, I, I, IAM follows process of I triple A. And that's identi- identification, authentication, authorization, and accounting. Alright, internet protocol security, IPsec is best defined as which of the following?
Hmm, D, a suite, suite of protocols that provide secure connections, oh, hold on. Yeah, D, a suite of pro- protocols that provide secure connections.
Yeah, cause it has, um, yeah, ESP and authentication header. And, uh, yeah, internet key exchange, that's what's included. Those suite of protocols are IPsec. Alright, an organization just experienced a minor breach in which in a workstation was infected with malware. After reviewing security information and event manager, uh, or seam logs, it's, it was determined that malware did not spread or call out. A, to a command and control server. Management later revealed it was due to a simulation training exercise in which an employee clicked a simulated malicious link in the email. In what stage of the incident management process would management determine how to better prepare the workplace for the next potential incident?
WS's learn.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the simulation exercise would allow management to recognize during a lessons learned phase. How to reduce their risk such as an attack in the future, and this, in this phase, all involved parties can reflect on what occurred. From the beginning to end, with this knowledge, after tests, they can be better prepared for the future. Alright, what term is used to describe a product or solution that is no longer actively offered for sale by its manufacturer?
It just said offered for sale. So, that would be end of life. Is it now, oh, cause.
Cause, and, and a support is like, no more updates to it.
Yeah.
I mean, th- these are also doggone close, man, because you got end of life, end of service life.
Life are the same.
Yeah. Gosh, man, it, it's. Gosh, man, it, it's, some of these terms are really just not needed.
Yeah.
Guess a little too grand, it's, it's a little too much. Alright, in non-governmental organizations, which type of information would be least likely to be classified as sensitive?
Okay, let's break this down.
So you got a central business context, board meeting minutes, financial information, and employee medical information. Oh, uh.
You know, employee medical information, financial information are one too.
Yeah.
It's hipper and board meeting mil- minutes and essential business contacts.
Which of the following should be least likely to be classified as sensitive? I, I probably would have to go with Bravo, because.
Yeah.
Financial, yeah, Charlie and Delta for sure. That's gonna be sensitive.
And central business contacts is somewhat sensitive.
Are you dealing with, cuz I, I'm thinking of like phone numbers, addresses that comes with that, uh, email, um. My only hesitation with board meeting minutes is if the meeting is, is done at a classified or a sensitive level. You, you know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
So that's, that's my hesitation with that one. Well, let's see.
Oh, yeah, oh, you know what, for business purposes.
Yeah.
At least we, we were, bagging is fifty fifty.
Yeah. Uh, I wanted that. Okay. Alright, after being promoted from security operations center analyst to cloud architect, an employee notices privileges from their prior SOC analyst role are still attached to his account. One day, the employee decides to combine privileges to extract proprietary company data from data service to a cloud instance. The employee then transfers the data from this cloud instance to their personal device before dissolving the cloud instance and logs associated with it. What technique most likely would have prevented this from happening?
Would that be at least privilege? Cuz that's a privileged creep.
Yeah, so after being promoted, employee notices. Yeah, they still have their, their privileges from their previous role.
What have been, least privilege or jaw rotations?
Yeah, no, 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 least privilege, because he, he should, he should not have that, uh, that access again when, after he got promoted.
Yeah.
So he, he's combining the privileges from his new role with, with privileges from his old role with his current role. So, yeah, and, yeah, example, privileged creep, right, and it says, alright, they, yeah. Yeah, it is, yeah, prevent someone from acquiring privileges over time, this would be known as privileged creeping. Alright, which of the following is considered the strongest authentication method?
Biometrics. Would it have been biometrics, the strongest authentication method?
It's not smart card, not token.
Smart card and tokens are something you have, you can get that encrypted key exchange. I'm down to be in deep encrypted key exchange or biometrics in.
Man, they say the strong, cuz I don't know if biometrics is the strongest. Cuz there's vulnerabilities with, like, even with fingerprint. So when, um, someone can, uh, do spoofing like for like facial recognition, like someone can, like someone could take a very high-def picture of you and use your, use your face for, um, security that uses any sort of facial recognition, I mean, that's happened.
I'll go with B. Then encrypted key exchange.
So, sometimes I, I, my concern.
Oh, authentication method, oh, wow. And that would throw everybody off too.
Yeah, sometimes I feel like I'm, I'm thinking a little too much into it. Cuz then like just going off of just experience and like, you know, stuff you've seen and, uh, yeah, sometimes, I'm, I'm trying to stay, stay within context for, especially like just for, within this exam. Yeah, cuz I was definitely thinking of other stuff, like especially more, and this was more to do with like just work or experience. Um, but, okay, alright, which of the following best describes what a chain of custody does?
A, those documents everyone who handles the evidence.
Yeah. Yeah, chronological documentation or paper trail showing a seizure, custody, control, transfer, analysis, and disposal of evidence. Alright, an IT administrator reviews all the servers in the organization and notices that a server is missing crucial patches against a recently discovered exploit, which best describes what the administrator has just found?
A vulnerability.
Yep.
I'm trying not to be too co- I'm trying to be, let's say, too overconfident about my answers.
Yeah. So then, you, you wanna slow yourself down. I mean, it's good to confident, but then also just double check, just make sure.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, which of the following is most specifically used to assess business functions and processes to prioritize their criticality?
I'm gonna say BCP.
To assess business functions and processes.
I think it's BCP. Because the prioritize their criticality will be BIA, but it's a use to assess business functions.
Oh, man, cuz I was looking at BIA.
It could be BIA.
It's most specifically used to assess business functions and processes to prioritize their criticality. To prioritize.
We know it's not B, and we know we're, we're so much through it, it's not C neither.
Yeah, I don't believe it's Charlie. Assess business functions. I don't know, man, I think this is Alpha.
We can go with that. I'll say it's fifty fifty, and so, yeah, you know, I'll say it's fifty fifty.
Yeah, it's BIA, yeah, yeah, so performing a business impact analysis is critical to developing a business continuity plan and a disaster recovery plan. The BIA identifies all critical functions and processes so that the organization can prioritize them based on criticality. The BIA also involves calculating risk for the identified business function so that vulnerabilities can be prioritized appropriately.
Last one.
Alright, which of the following best describes a known plane text attack?
Oh, man.
It's gonna be Delta.
Delta, when attacker already knows a portion of the plane text. Man.
Yeah, crypt, yeah, a known plane text attack is a tech model for cryptanalysis where attacker has samples of both the plain text and its encrypted version. Knowing a portion of message can, um, um, knowing a portion of the message can help decrypt the remainder of the cipher text.
Let's see, we got seventy-three, that's passing.
Oh, I was like, man, yeah, still pass, still pass.
I guess if you look at the incorrect, we were always fifty fifty on it.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah, we weren't far off, um, just, just picked the wrong half of the fifty fifty.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
And so, we, it's, it's the learning part that if you get halfway there, you're almost there.
Right.
I guess that's the read part of it, read from, uh, Pizza Hut.
Right. Alright, well, that's another great session, uh, again, thank you everyone for watching and following along and those on the replay, the replay gang, I hope you appreciate it and may, be able to learn something. So again, uh, uh, it's next week, it's next week, uh, the holiday?
Yeah, it's, uh, Thanksgiving week.
Okay. Maybe decide, not, not quite decide what we're gonna do next week, Monday, we'll see. I'll, I'll send out a note, but, uh, um, if anything, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll let everyone know. But, um, again, hope everyone enjoys, again, please, again, you know, subscribe, share it to your friends, especially those you know are, are studying for this exam, join, uh, join us, our Discord community, um, command line, follow us on LinkedIn, uh, Talor Cyber, and, um, you know, come and study and learn with us. Alright, have a good night, we'll see you next time.